All right, so Keith should be joining us here shortly. Commissioner Petrie, the floor is yours. Can't hear you.
I try and unmute for the clocks. Anyway. Welcome, everyone. I'd like to call this Planning Commission meeting to order. The first order of business is roll call. Ronnie, you want to do the roll call?
Yeah, Commissioner Walters. Commissioner Walter.
Go on mute. I'm here.
Commissioner Casanova. Commissioner Mark Manillis.
I'm here.
Commissioner Bellows.
Here.
Commissioner Paulson. Commissioner Paulson.
Here.
I can hear you now. And Commissioner Petrie.
Here.
All right, and then we have not here, Casanova, and then Billy Reynolds has resigned.
Okay, so before we get started, I just wanted to make one comment about Billy Reynolds offering her resignation. You know, I think we should just thank Billy for all the time and energy she's put into the city for all these years on City Council, on Planning Commission, on whatever else. She's just been a huge contributor to the city, and I think she's still good at 92, but she, I guess, I guess she wants to retire a little bit more so. So anyway, a big thank you from, from me personally and from whoever wants to. But thank you, Billy, for all the work that you've done, and hopefully you'll still be able to participate, and we'll be able to see you soon. So anyway. Okay, so moving right along, our first order of business is approval of the minutes. Did all of the commissioners have a chance to take a look at the minutes of the last meeting?
Yes.
Okay, so then if there are other any corrections or changes required?
I would like to offer a change. Marcy McInally is not a Mrs. Marcy McInally, she is a Ms. and prefers that prefix.
Okay, all right, so noted. Ronnie, you can make that correction. Is there anything else? Okay, so let's go ahead. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the March 24th meeting?
I move to to permit the minutes of the March 24th meeting with corrections.
Correct. Okay, do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, that was Mark. All right, so let's go to a vote. I think we can just raise our hand. Are all those in favor of this motion? Raise your hand. Okay, it looks like it's unanimous. Great, so the motions are, minutes are approved. So the next order of business is more conversation about the master plan update, and I believe that that's going to be.
That's going to be.
Oh, no, is that going to be Keith? Okay.
Yeah, what I would recommend is we go to the House Bill 2001 material first.
Okay.
Marcy can make her presentation, then she can decide to stay or not if, because I know she's busy right now with this project and others. So maybe we could do that, and then we could give you updates on both the master plan and the TSP.
That sounds like a great idea. So Marcy, are you prepared to go ahead and start with your presentation?
Yes, I am. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'm going to share my screen so I can walk you through the packet material. Can people give me a thumbs up if you see this? Okay, thank you. Great. So this was literally the material in your packet. I'm just going to walk you through it. I don't have a separate presentation. So starting on the first page, some of this is just a review to let you know that the House Bill 2001 amendments is about amending King City's code, zoning code, to allow these middle housing types. And all cities in Oregon over a certain size are doing this in this year in order to comply with the legislation that passed last November. And I'll just remind you all that King City is kind of already ahead of most cities in Oregon in this regard, in that you have very compact housing, a lot of attached housing, small lots. And these characteristics are part of middle housing, so you're already kind of meeting in spirit the requirements. But the code still needs to be updated, and, and that's what this project is about. The code will apply to the new Kingston Terrace area as well. So what we're, the system that we're setting up within the code, which I'll go into more detail in a moment, will, I think, make it easier to allow this middle housing legislation to be applied to the Kingston Terrace area. Please interrupt me if you have any questions as we go. The project is very short because, partly because this is a grant-funded project through DLCD. We started in December. We have to be done with the grant funds and the amendments by June. So the orange box is kind of where we are right now. We're entering the public hearing phase. And at the last Planning Commission, I think we talked about the material that would be going out to notify the public of the public hearings. It's been added to the master plan website as part of additional information, and it notifies everyone about the kind of frequently asked questions about this project and the dates of the next hearings, of the public hearings, or the public hearing singular. So the refined amendments consist of dimensional standards, tables, articles and chapters are being amended. We, we went into this in more detail in a previous presentation, so I won't dwell on it here. But we created this handy table to help you kind of see the way that the new chapters will be working. I'm going to show you later a picture of what your code looks like today and what it will look like under this new organization. And I think it'll be kind of clear to you when you see the pictures, but the orange areas in this table are the ones that I would be showing you, and they are, in fact, the ones that we're focused on in this project. In the beginning of this project, we talked about a larger reorganization of your whole code, and it was the, we provided several options, and one of them was that we, we set up that reorganization, and the other was that we anticipate that organization, but only amend the relevant chapters. That's the option that we're going with. That's why these two sections are highlighted, is because the permitted and conditional uses, which is your 1684030, that's going to be amended and also set up in its, this reorganization. And the 1684040 dimensional and density requirements will also be set up using this new organization, but those are the limits of the reorganization. This, there is sort of one larger organization, though, that all of the chapters that, that House Bill 2001 applies to, or all of the land uses that it applies to, are listed here. So it's single-family, R9, R12, R15, multifamily, R15, and R24. And those are going to be combined a lot closer together and easier to compare in your new rewritten chapters for House Bill. Are there any questions? Okay, great. So the first thing that we did in reorganizing those land use chapters, and I'll just remind you that the House Bill, no matter where you are, no matter what city you are, the House Bill 2001 has to be applied to zones that currently allow single dwellings today. If it allows, if a zone allows a detached single dwelling, it must be amended to allow this, these range of housing types. And the housing types are duplexes on all lots, triplexes on lots over 5,000 square feet, quadplexes and cottage clusters on lots over 7,000, and townhouses on lots that are 1,500 square feet minimum. Okay, so I have my question. I think you answered. So it is 5,000 and greater. So 5,000, so it's not 5,001 square feet, it's just 5,000, right? Correct. If it's, if the lot is 5,000, then it must accommodate a duplex or a triplex. Okay. So the first step I went through to try to set up this more simple organization of these land use districts was to re-give them a new hierarchy, and Keith really helped me understand here kind of the, the different zones. They have different histories. And so I, we actually wound up putting the oldest King City zones, the kind of original King City zones, at the bottom of this table, single-family residential and apartments and townhouses. And as I note here on the right, this, these are the two original King City zoning designations. In single-family, the height's limited to 20 feet, and in the apartments and townhouses zone, it's limited to 30 feet. But the reason that we, I pulled these out is because they're not, they're, they probably won't be applied within the Kingston Terrace area. They're kind of done being used as zones for now, for, for the future. And these zones, R9, R12, R15, and R24, is really kind of the new system that we'll be applying mostly to the Kingston Terrace area, because even though we are amending these, this code, there's not much land within the existing King City. So there will be very little development that results from this change. However, it does set up the Kingston Terrace area. Are there any questions about that? Share, Karen. Yeah, I'm sorry. So if your lot is less than 5,000 square feet, can you still divide the, the house on the lot into two units? Yes, your current code allows you to do that. Thank you. Let me point out one thing before we leave this page, which is that in talking to Keith about these zones, these two, the R15 and the R24, we are proposing to raise the height limits in those two zones. Currently in R15, it's 30 feet. We would like to, we're proposing to raise that to 35. And currently in R24, it's 40 feet. We propose to raise that to 45. And that comes from experience that staff has had trying to administer the, or trying to administer for applications that 30 and 40 feet are quite restrictive, especially because that measures to the top of the roof. All right, so once we did that re-hierarchy of the zones, it makes it easier to set it up in a table, in this table. Let me make this a little bit bigger so you can see all of the cells. What, one of our goals is to create a more form-based approach that can be applied to the zoning code, because it's very abstract, as you're all familiar with, and to the extent that we can try to help anyone, that it would be you on the Planning Commission, or staff, or an applicant, understand the form that is intended for the area, it's, it's better. So the numbers actually help tell that story a little bit. If you see the, what we, what I did here was with the re-hierarchy, re-hierarchy of the zones, I was able to put the less dense zone on the left and the more dense zone on the right, and that we will carry that system through all of the development standards so that you can kind of keep track of the amount of building that's allowed on the site more easily, more intuitively. Also, we're, I'm proposing that you change some of the names of these house types. It doesn't change their, it doesn't change them in reality. It just eliminates a word, "single family", that is generally being taken out of these zoning codes through the House Bill. So rather than saying dwelling, single-family detached, we would prefer to say single-dwelling detached. Similarly, multi-dwelling, instead of saying dwelling, comma, multifamily, we would say multi-dwelling. So you can see in this table the way that it's been set up, and this is kind of a placeholder, how the housing types are allowed in each of these zones. And you can also see how the old King City zones of single-family and attached are a little bit odd. That partly has to do with the lot sizes. But the main message here, so you see all this green here, except for multi-dwelling is not allowed in the R9, but otherwise, all of these types of detached, attached, accessory duplexes are all allowed pretty much everywhere. And the way that they're allowed will have to do with the lot size, the setbacks, the height, and the other development standards. Hi, sorry, got a question. So as, all right, so I worked for a planner, as a planner in Woodburne, and if you told me that there were only nine, that, that nine dwelling units per acre were allowed, and somebody wanted to put a duplex on one of those single dwelling lots, and there's already eight dwellings in that neighborhood, I would interpret that as a planner to, to know I couldn't, because there's only nine allowed. So if you might, you might want to put a range on that nine with, with the caveat that, you know, it's, it's a duplex on a ninth of an acre. That's just my thinking, because I would definitely interpret that as only nine dwelling units. What do you think about us eliminating this row altogether from this particular table? Because it's actually, I included it here, the dwelling units per acre and the minimum lot size, side by side in this table. But it's really the minimum lot size and all of the development standards that are going to govern the number of units that are permitted. That's going to trump probably the other standards. Maybe you could put, instead of calling it dwelling units per acre, you can maybe call it lots per acre. But it actually is dwelling units per acre, not lots.
I, I think that with these new rules, that the, the density that you're going to get is less predictable, because there's more flexibility as to what you can put on any individual lot. So my thought, we'll have to talk about this some more, and maybe we come back to you in May with another idea. But I'm thinking that perhaps what we can do is this. In the comprehensive plan, when we describe our different use categories and zones, we could just describe it more generally, that just say, well, we're typically looking at densities between X and Y, but not saying it's got to be in this range, and it can, and this is the maximum. But just say that this type of development should yield this kind of density, and not make it a requirement, and then take the density requirement out of the zone itself. So you're clear on the intent. This is the kind of thing we want to have happen. The density would be between X and Y, this kind of mix of units. We have that discussion in the comprehensive plan. But then we just have our standards that are consistent with that idea, but we don't try to, we don't try to match what you could do on each lot with this specific density number, and then trying to figure out how to calculate that. Because then you would go back, I guess, well, if it was just a partition, do you just, that created a lot to begin with, are you, are you only looking at your density for that part, those two or three lots that you created? Or would you be looking at all of Edgewater on the Tuolumne with however many lots they had? So I mean, it would, trying to, trying to think about density while we're doing these other things, I think is going to be really difficult. So I would suggest we probably go somewhere along those lines.
My dearly beloved husband Scott just suggested that my, it might be a number of structures on a lot that, you know, nine dwelling structures, which could have as many as you can put in there, or whatever. Some, some cities are, some cities use, you know, a floor area ratio, which is a total development capacity or a building envelope on the site. And even, and that's very abstract, and most, and other cities, you know, don't want anything, they don't want to use the FAR because it's too hard for people to understand. However, an FAR is really just a calculation of what's in the, the building envelope. We, we call it the Jell-O mold, like, you know, if you take all the setbacks and the height and the coverage and all of the standards that you have, there's kind of a, a shape that is created. And your develop, a developer or a homeowner could fit some additions or some new structures into that shape, however they want to do it. There's a lot of flexibility being created through this code about the way that that is done. But it's supposed to still look like, I mean, a single dwelling could not exceed that envelope today, and a multi-dwelling structure or structures could not exceed that tomorrow. So it's supposed to look the same as a single dwelling, but potentially have more or more choices for housing inside it. And so what some cities are doing is they're translating that belt, building envelope into a total number of square feet. And that's something we could look at as well.
So Marcy, this is Mike. So in regards to Commissioner Bellows' comments and Keith's comments on this, perhaps we have a definition, like, for R9, it's nine residential units, but inside that unit could be a duplex, a triplex, or a quadplex. You know, wouldn't that be in line with the House Bill 2001, in essence? Because we're talking about one structure per lot, right? Or a structure in an ADU?
Or in, in a quadplex, you're looking at, or a triplex or a quadplex, you're looking at three or four. But yeah, you could, you, we could say residential structures.
Right, but if we say lots, like, say the R9 zone is nine lots per acre, right? And inside those lots, you can have a unit, that unit can be the primary unit, and then you could have an accessory. Inside the one unit, you could have up to a quadplex per the, the House Bill, right?
On a 2,400 square foot lot, according to this minimum lot size.
So I mean, basically, what we're trying to do is get away from the mindset that it's, that we're talking residential units. I think when we talk about the zone, R9, R12, R15, we're talking about the number of lots. And somehow we have to separate the number of lots from the number of units, or number of residential.
Yeah, yeah, you're, it's true, that this is kind of like the old system still hanging around, but there's kind of a new system that we're moving into. I do think, to everyone's point so far, that the dwelling units per acre is very misleading. And it does need to be decoupled from the lot size. The lot size is going to allow you to have different housing types on it. There could be more than, there could be, depending on the lot size, there could be up to four, in the case of a cottage cluster, there could be five or more dwelling units on a lot.
I mean, even if you had, sorry to interject again, but even if you had a 2,400, 2,500 square foot lot, you can build a pretty big house on that, or a pretty big unit that could accommodate, you know, a quadplex. Essentially, it just depends on how, how high you allow it to go.
Yeah, and it just might be interesting to know that some cities are realizing, kind of for the first time, that in all their single dwelling zones, the amount of development that's possible within their building envelope or their Jell-O mold is surprisingly large, you know, like, some cities are realizing that on a 10,000 square foot lot, you can have 8,000 square feet of development, not, not that, and it's never, it's not been done. In most cities that, that are not seeing McMansions built, they're not seeing that kind of development on a single dwelling lot, but that has been possible, that is in their books today. So some cities are actually reducing that total allowance, which would apply to single dwellings as well as multi-dwellings. So I think I'm, yeah, Commissioner Bellows. Do we, do we have a definition of dwelling units? That's for Mike. We do? Okay. And your dwelling, your, your definition is quite flexible and liberal, and it, it describes a multi-dwelling structure. It's, it describes an attached structure, sorry, it describes a residential structure that potentially has multiple attached units in it. And one of the things that we talked about in an earlier Planning Commission and that we're moving forward with is to just add the additional flexibility in that definition to have them be detached as well. Well, this has been really a good discussion. We'll come back with a proposal for how to decouple this kind of misleading dwelling units per acre, and explain the amount of development that is possible, and how, more clearly.
Yeah, this is Keith. I think we'll want to talk with DLCD and as well, because when a lot of these dwelling unit requirements, I mean, density requirements were put into effect, Metro was very focused at the time we did these zones and did with West King City, was that these new developments would attain a minimum density. So we were very focused on how many units per acre were we going to get? And that focus has really sort of shifted now. We're looking at, you know, how many different types of units can we provide? And we're not quite as concerned about hitting a specific number. So we'll have to talk to them too about what they'd like to see for still showing that we have a commitment to have certain density levels in different places of the city.
Yes, and I think that's going to be a big issue in the Kingston Terrace area. Because I, I think that's where you're going to really want to be clear about what your minimum density is. Continue to be clear about your minimum density. And in fact, the House Bill does address the master planning areas, and Kingston Terrace falls into that category for King City. It, it does need to address infrastructure that will serve, sorry, it doesn't, a city needs to prove that it can provide infrastructure to serve up to 20 dwelling units per acre in a master plan area. There's a lot of, you know, flexibility for a city to decide how to do that. That will be a big part of the master planning process. So, you know, does that lead you to set 20 dwelling units per acre as a minimum for all of King City, Kingston Terrace? Or I think where Keith and the master plan team have been talking is that there might be some flexibility across the, from east to west, depending on the kind of context, but that, on average, the whole area is hitting a 20 dwelling units per acre. Any comments about that? Okay, I just, I think we'll be talking about that more in the master planning process. Okay, great. So moving on. So I talked about this already, and now I'm going to show you a picture. Now that we've set up. Now that we've set up that, that from like less dense on the left to more dense on the right, structure for a table, that is a more form-based intuitive way of being able to see the numbers. This is how we would use, we would use that same system to set up the development standards also. And we don't have this all filled out right now, but these are all the things that we will have standard, numerical standards for. And the way these tables will, the way it will look in the end is the lower numbers here, higher numbers here. And then kind of like weird numbers here, because these are the old King City, the original King City zoning definitions. But this is the list of all the things that we'll be covering. There, there may be other additions. Right. So to give you a little picture of how like this kind of new system will look compared with what you currently have, we've prepared some slides. Let me, to make these a bit smaller. So right now, the way that the land use, right now, the way that your land use chapters work is they go one after another, after another, and they all look like this. And so for as an, as a sample, uh, we have the AT zone page here and the R12 zone page here. They run through just A, B, C, D, you know, listing of the dwelling types. This section would be replaced by a side-by-side table, like I showed you a couple of slides up. Lot easier to see and understand, and it's also allows us more intuitive, form-based understanding. And then, um, so that's what it will look like in the future. And then when it comes to development standards, so those numerical standards, I have yours, your existing zoning code actually has two different types of ways of displaying this information. The AT zone on the left shows it in a listing, you know, minimum average lot depth of 80 feet, minimum building setback requirements of, and, and it listed like that, and then on the right in your R12, you have a table. Ronnie, are you trying to say something? Okay, um, so what we'll be doing with those, similarly tabling them out, so it would look more like that, be a little easier to read, I mean, actually, I think dramatically easier to understand and use. Any questions? I think my last couple of slides are just about like what, how this will also be accompanied by graphics. So these, this is an example from another form-based code for a residential district that shows the, uh, development standards in a table, and then it shows like where that dimension applies using these letter keys in the table keyed to a section. Uh, here at the top and a plan at the bottom. It's still a very abstract kind of diagram, but it does help you understand when we are saying F rear setback, say, what is it that we're precisely applying that dimension to? Let me see if there's anything else. All right. So I think this is my last slide, I just wanted to, I just want to reiterate the fact that while we are making these amendments, very few of them will change anything in existing King City, and that has to do with that one vacant land is quite rare. And the likelihood of middle housing infill within King City is low, and that has a lot to do with just the lot sizes and the amount that's already been built up. I mean, if infill is possible, but it's still, it will be quite rare. So vacant lots are rare, infill likelihood will be low. And the existing development pattern is always, are already quite consistent with what the, the House Bill will lead to. So any infill will probably look very similar to what is there today. Uh, it's the end of my presentation. Mary, uh, or Carol, you're, I think, oh, yes, Commissioner, um, or I'm sorry, Chair. I can't see everybody's name. I'm going to stop sharing so that I can see everybody's faces. Yeah, um, Chair Petrie?
Yeah, I just had one kind of generic question for you, Marcy. I know from it, from the slides, we can tell that, um, you have done this kind of, of changes with tables and things in other cities. I've seen the references to McMinnville and some others, so they've already done this, right? So what, do you have a feel for what kind of feedback they've received from users of the codes? Like it, don't like it, happy that it's there, um, do you have any feel for that?
My feedback from, most mostly from staff who are administering these and meeting with applicants at the permit center and they do, since we work so closely with them in the drafting of these, as we are here in King City too, they're already familiar with them and, and able to use them. And I do hear that it is easier for them to explain to an applicant what is, what is permitted, because it's also, it's much more intentional. It explain, through the numbers, it explains what is expected on the site in a more accessible way. It's still a code though, so it's still, um, kind of inaccessible, you know, fundamentally for many people. But I hear generally that the reorganization, the simplification is, makes it easier to use.
I think also a lot of people are visual, and so if you have some diagrams, it helps so much to then understand what you're talking about. What a rear yard is, what a side yard is, those kinds of things, what the height, uh, what height requirements actually mean when you look at it. And I think the other is, uh, from the standpoint of code administration, uh, the format that we have for residential zones right now, in my opinion, couldn't be a whole lot worse. I mean, I'll, I'll be in a situation where I know the standard is on that page, but I'll be darned if I can find it anywhere. You know, the number is written out as 18, you know, EIG8, you know, whatever, and I think, oh, come on. So it makes it a lot quicker for everybody, and then if the city also wants to provide some information sheets, handouts, it's also a lot clearer and cleaner. I think the other big thing though, with the code that we're going to have to talk about, and we'll, we'll work with Marcy as we go forward to having a draft for you to review next month, is to really be careful about having overlapping standards, and maybe you're trying to get at the same issue and they don't quite align. So that's why I'm really worried, I, I'm, we, we're going to have to look really carefully at how we deal with density and how we deal with our standards, because they could be, without us realizing, we could have some that collide, and then we're wondering what to do. We've already run into that, uh, uh, already, uh, Carol Bellows knows, uh, we had our, our, you know, our recent subdivision where there was a question about, well, how do you calculate the density? And we had two parts of the code that really don't quite align, so I, we, we definitely want to avoid that as we go forward.
Are there any more questions, uh, for, for Marcy? So I think maybe Marcy could move on to other, other tasks right now, she's ready.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Marcy.
Thanks for your time. See you next month.
Thank you, Marcy. So then, uh, that Keith, I think you were going to take over and, uh, get to the master plan update and also the TSP update.
Okay, uh, so for the master plan, we are, uh, currently working on when to have a, uh, uh, some public events, and so we'll have some more word for you, but it'll probably be, uh, mid-May. If I'm remembering correctly, Mike can pipe in if I'm incorrect there, so we're, uh, working on getting that started. Right now, we have really a lot of coordination types of issues, uh, that we're working on. So one of the big pieces to the master plan, particularly in the town center area, is what kind of a street network and grid can we set up? And so what we're hoping to do is have a, a, a street and block system that has fairly small block sizes that make it easier for people to walk around, and the scale of, of where you need to go is much more walkable than having really long blocks and very few opportunities to cross a street. So we've been talking with the city of Tiger, because as you know, they're, they're working on a concept plan for River Terrace South, which would come to the north edge of Beef Ben Road. And our town center main street would come up more to the south edge of Beef Ben Road. So we've been talking about how do we get these two plans to talk to one another and, and make sense together? One of the things that we're talking with, we'll be talking with Tiger about more, and then Washington County is how many opportunities are, is the county going to give us to have intersections on Beef Ben Road? And so, uh, we think that that's really important. To be honest, uh, the county seems to really focus mostly on, um, car throughput and traffic congestion, and not so much about the land use and pedestrian scale and those sorts of things. So we're hoping that we can come up with an agreement where we have a good balance between the two. So that's one issue that we have going on. Then with the TS, uh, let's see, um, I'm trying to think if there's anything else. I think the coordination is probably the biggest, and then the other is, uh, the TSP is going forward. And we are going to be having some discussions pretty soon relating to street standards that we want to have for the different streets, Beef Ben, Fisher, local streets, and how those might be different depending on the context. You know, as, uh, for example, as Fisher, uh, travels from the town center main street area into residential neighborhoods, how might that street design and character change, uh, to respond to the different, different, uh, context? We'll also be looking pretty closely at how do we want to improve, work with the county to improve Beef Ben Road? And, uh, one of the big issues, uh, I think is how do we accommodate pedestrians and cyclists on Beef Ben Road? And we'll be looking really closely at having something that's, that's different from the usual in-street bike lane, curb-tight sidewalk, which nobody really cares to use on those kinds of streets, because they're really not pleasant. But it is going to be important that we have a good, uh, connection for pedestrians and cyclists on Beef Ben, because at the best, we're going to have Beef Ben Road, uh, the Fisher Extension, maybe a trail, and that's going to be about what we have for east-west connection going all the way across. So we're going to have to be very thoughtful about those kinds of things. So, uh, the TSP is supposed to be done by the end of June. Quite frankly, DKS, our consultant there, has a heck of a lot of work to get done in the next couple of months, so we'll be having a lot, um, to be talking about probably next month. And, um, we're talking about a work session, and I, I think it was you folks for the 24th, or at least an update with DKS. And then, uh, the city council is going to have, um, a work session with them in June. Now, the TSP is not going to be adopted by the end of June, so we'll still have, uh, opportunity to, um, modify things, make changes, particularly as our, uh, master plan takes, takes more shape between now and, and December. I think that's about it. You should be seeing quite a bit more on both of these next month. I don't know if Mike's still on, if he has anything else, but, uh,
He's coming, he's coming back, I mean, he got dropped off.
Okay.
I ask a question about Beef Bend.
Sure.
Construction occurring right now, it looks like they are improving, what the county is improving upon the, the sidewalks. Do you have any, um, background information about what their, their ultimate goal is with their construction?
Uh, I'm, I'm not familiar with it, maybe Mike might be.
So, um, Mike, uh, uh, Mike, do you have any updates on the Washington County update on the, uh, ADA ramps?
Along Beef Bend there?
Correct.
Any updates? Um, not really. Uh, I talked with, uh, Michael Dahlstrom from the Highlands, he talked to him as well. Uh, we're trying to figure out, there's some little things that they did along that stretch that we're not too happy about. Particularly right there at 116th, where they built like a little bit of a curb on the backside, so now we can't build a sidewalk to connect to it, so we basically have to redo that ADA ramp if we were to connect a sidewalk to it.
Which we are this summer.
Yeah, exactly. And then there's, uh, a number of them, uh, down about halfway to 131st Street that were like mid-block crossings, and then they have curves on them, and there's no sidewalks adjacent to. Just, just a couple of frustrating things here and there, but, um, I, I think this was something that they had scoped out and, uh, didn't necessarily consult with us before they actually pulled the trigger and did the project.
Yes, Carol.
Do you still have something, Annie, because I'm going to change the subject?
Yeah, my, my question, I guess, is like, if, you know, as we move forward in our planning, and we've got this entity that is also making improvements on their property, but what is the coordination that we foresee in the future? Is it, are they going to be doing, you know, this thing over here, and then we're trying to accomplish something else, and they don't always match up appropriately? Is that, what, what's the end?
Yeah, ultimately, ultimately Beef Bend is a county facility. County owns the right of way, county, uh, what do you want to call it, a, uh, cross-section bounty engineering has to sign off on all of it. Am I coming through okay, or is it muddled?
It's fine.
You're fine.
Ultimately, though, it's the county facility, so we have to run everything through them. We are trying to get them to buy off on a number of our streetscapes that we're going through with the master plan and our intersections and cross-sections. So, um, hopefully that's where the coordination comes. Right now, since the city doesn't have a TSP in place, we rely on Washington County's transportation system plan. Keith, does that sound about right to you?
Uh, yes, I, I think that, uh, hopefully our TSP and master plan, uh, getting agreement with Washington County as to what we're really trying to do. Now, the master plan obviously is going to be focused on the area between 137th and Roy Rogers, but the TSP covers the entire city. And we can have a clear vision on what it is we want to have along Beef Bend Road, for example, and, uh, hopefully get the, the county to buy in. But right now, they don't have any plan from us, we don't, you know, our, our plans are totally silent, so they're just doing what, what theirs says.
We are trying to promote a couple, uh, funding buckets, to Washington County for use to do sidewalks on the southern edge there and complete the network. They have a number of county-wide buckets to make those sidewalk improvements. And I mean, they're down there pouring these connections to nowhere, and it's like, well, why aren't you just doing the sidewalk while you're at it? So, um, we're trying to get the county to step up on it.
Great, okay. Uh, Carol has a question.
Thank you. Um, Keith, um, our setbacks are really, um, narrow, um, especially the rear setbacks and our, um, in our code. With the amount of density that we are, um, proposing, um, I'm really concerned that, um, there just won't be enough outdoor space or space between the buildings that, you know, I'm going to be looking, you know, 20 feet into my neighbor's, you know, bedroom window. Is there any proposal to increase the setbacks with the, um, density that we've got?
We don't, but it certainly could be fair game. We're going to be talking about design standards with this, with the residential code amendments that Marcy was just talking about. And, um, you know, maybe also, I think having the table will be informative, because then you can see how the different zones compare and, and if we have some, uh, consistent approach from one zone to the next. And we could also talk about, um, possibility of increasing setbacks. There's, you know, obviously, there's a lot of push and pull as to how you get that to work. And, you know, what makes sense from the standpoint of what a developer can put together, housing affordability, uh, all those sorts of things, but, uh, certainly, this would be the time to look at it. Uh, and I think, uh, once we get, uh, a draft put together, we could talk about the setbacks, and then it'll also be easier, because we'll have some diagrams illustrating how this might actually And then it'll also be easier because we'll have some diagrams illustrating how this might actually look so you can get a better, a little better picture.
That's gonna be great. Um, did you have tomorrow, Keith, are you, anything else?
Oh, I was just, I, I guess I was just gonna say to Carol, in the meantime, maybe just take a look at the code that we have now and maybe highlight in your mind what setbacks you think might be problematic. Maybe even email us, uh, and then I can talk to Marcy about it, uh, as, as she's putting a draft together.
Question, so, um, I live in Edgewater where I have one of the, you know, posted stamped lots. Would you say that Edgewater kind of exemplifies the, um, the setbacks, you know, insofar as they're using all the buildable land practically? Um, is that a good example of kind of maximizing buildable property on the lot?
I think that's pretty close. Um, the one that's, uh, to the north of Macbeth, the new one that just was put in. I'm trying to remember the name of it now. South of, yes, immediately south of the Castle Oaks subdivision is still in the county. That would be, uh, that would be an example of absolutely maxing out the, the, uh, setback requirements in the R twelve zone. So that would be an example of they, they absolutely went to the, to the line. They built it out as maximum as you can. Edgewater, they may have not taken advantage of every possible foot that they could have used. Um, I'd have to look back at that, but it was pretty close. I mean, the houses pretty much filled the lot to the setback requirements.
On which part? Uh, because I live in old Edgewater and then there's new Edgewater.
Right.
There's differing there. And I think that the benefit of Arden Village is it's surrounded by a lot of open space. So it, though the individual lots little space, um, there is a lot of unbilleded, like unbilled up land there too.
Right.
Which, which adds to the character of the, the entire property and, you know, gives people relief from building only.
Yeah, yeah. So, um, uh, Edgewater is mostly R nine. And then R twelve would have been, um, Arden Village. And then the part on Macbeth, just south of it.
Yeah, uh, Macbeth.
Yeah. So north of Fisher Road, north of Fisher Road is R twelve, you know, over to that side and then up.
The apartments too, over, uh, next to the Highlands is R twelve too.
Yes. The, those apartment buildings, those, the, the apartment complex that's on Dixon and then the subdivision that's, um, immediately, uh, east of it. That was developed as one project with R twelve zoning. And so the subdivision itself was probably more like an R nine. And then in order to meet the density requirement for the whole property, the developer did a, an apartment complex on a hundred and thirty-first. So that the entire development met the, uh, twelve unit per acre standard.
I would just caution one thing in regards to setbacks. Um, when we have density requirements, um, and we start throwing in or start expanding setbacks from the minimum, we're risking creating a, uh, unpalatable situation for development. So I just, just would throw out some caution on that. It's kind of like a balancing act essentially.
Okay, so, um, anything else on, on this particular part of the updates then? Okay, so the, the next thing would, I think this probably takes care of the staff reports unless we wanna go on to city manager. Mike, did you have anything you wanted to talk about this morning?
Um, we did a tour, uh, last week of the expansion area going out, uh, through where the Fisher Road extension would be, across the Bankston easement, over through, uh, Mr. Meyer's property and across, um, O'Halloran's property and, uh, to the Harold property over off Elsner. Along that way, we came across a, uh, large area on the O'Halloran property that has like a, uh, it's like an underground, uh, clay weir, if you will, that was used back in the farming days to, uh, address drainage and things of that nature. And it's created a large underwater stream that created a big slough at the bottom end of the property. In crossing the, uh, Fisher Road area at the end of River Lane, there's actually a double culvert at the bottom of Fisher Lane on the Bankston property that's been washed out. Looks like there was an old, uh, farm road out there, probably a twenty-foot farm road that actually crossed the creek there at the end of Fisher Road. The terrain, it, it's a pretty wide span, uh, about four hundred feet, but it's a gentle grade down to the stream bed and, uh, relatively gentle grade coming back up on the first crossing. The second crossing, as you go to the west, is a little steeper and probably a little bit, um, well, it's not, well, there's already a culvert crossing there at a hundred and forty-seventh where a hundred and forty-seventh crosses over. So that one, not too bad. The third one, however, is pretty steep and pretty, um, far apart. The fourth one as well, along the O'Halloran property, was, uh, pretty steep, uh, especially along the Twalton River. But there's a access, I would say, down to the river on the O'Halloran property. And then, um, as we go, sorry if I'm boring everybody, but as we go further over toward Elsner, uh, there is another drainage over there that I think has some potential if we, uh, do some drainage fixes over there. It looks like there's four or five culverts going under Elsner that cross over and create four or five different ravines on the other side of the road. Those culverts, um, were never meant to drain that way, and so it's not a natural drain pattern. Um, I think there's avenues there where we can correct some of that and improve it. You know, we had some interesting conversations with the landowners. You know, even those that were in opposition, they understand that the growth is coming. I, I think that, um, looking at the terrain and the complications of the terrain, uh, it definitely, poses some questions on how we get to our end and how we provide, uh, connected street network, um, throughout the city. And, you know, I tried to explain to them that ideally what we want is essentially a east-west collector street, essentially every six hundred feet or so, you know, if we're gonna actually build on a grid. So, w- we're not talking about just the Fisher Road crossing. We're talking about Fisher Road crossing, uh, Capulet Crossing and probably, uh, crossing that's closer in line with the, uh, bottom edge of Deer Creek, you know, for being the third one. So when we start looking at a grid throughout that area, it's not just one, it's, it's a series of crossings here and there. So trying to get that across to them that, you know, neighborhood blocks are probably two to four hundred feet, collector streets every six hundred feet, you know, and you start trying to build a network off of a grid throughout this area and you start seeing how the traffic can get dispersed, how there's not all the funneling or the bottlenecking. And actually, I think I was trying, I was actually getting some buy-in on that from a number of the residents who were like, that's a, that's good, because then it's not all funneled down our street. So that was, I think, some positive. It was also commission, Council Platt, uh, made it, um, to the meeting. We were supposed to have, we only had two spots and, uh, Counselor Moore and, uh, Counselor Paulson were going to go. Um, both had last-minute events that popped up, so they couldn't. And then we scrambled to try to get somebody who could come last minute and, uh, Counselor Platt was able to come down and join us, uh, for council representation. But I think we're gonna try to do another tour, uh, for the council and possibly planning commission. Um, we're trying to arrange that with the residents over there. I do believe that there's a, after walking it, I would probably change some minor things about some alignments here and there. Other elements, I think, um, become pretty clear, particularly in regards to, uh, Fisher Road on what's the best alignment for that. I think we really need to have a conversation with, uh, Columbia Land Trust and figure out what's the best course of action there. Other than that, there's a really nice wetland area that's south of Mr. Meyer's property that has some ecological value. Um, I think this area would really benefit from, uh, in-stream, uh, retention facilities uh, like we were talking about before, where it's not necessarily the, uh, caged wetland that we see throughout King City, but rather a, um, community resource essentially. And if we can figure out a way to have those retentions within the existing stream beds, I think that's the better course of action because if we try to put them on the upland areas, it's gonna create soil saturation and probably exacerbate the sloughing. Other than that, that's my kind of update on the tour. We're still moving ahead with the T S P. We have TAC and SAC for the master plan coming out, um, next, what, May fourth and fifth, I believe. So that's coming up. We also have a transportation system plan, um, public outreach and tabling event at the King City Community Park in mid-May. And then, just in the back of your mind, we're also trying to promote a, uh, gas tax throughout the city. So we're looking at that and, uh, we're trying to have conversations with the gas station owners on what the level they would support, as well as going out for a community online survey to see if we can garner some, um, level of interest or figure out what the community would support. So that's, that's kind of the update, you know, in a brief.
That's a lot.
Yeah, sorry, there's a lot going on.
I, Carol has a question.
Sure.
Hi, Mike. Um, I'm on the TAC and that sounds like it's really important information for us. If you do that, um, if, if you do that tour again, consider me a member of the TAC to go on it, if you would please. Thank you.
Mike, and also, don't, let's not forget about the Bedford annexation that we're looking into right now. The Millers went out, I believe, last Friday. Um, homeowners should have got it now.
Yeah, we got them.
Okay.
Friday or Saturday, yeah.
Okay, perfect. Um, we did get a couple of questions pertaining, uh, asking about, you know, the annexation. Really, those are, are just kind of feelers as to see if anybody's actually interested or not. If they're not, um, they'll just probably throw it away. Um, if they are interested, they'll sign it and then, uh, we'll go from there. And then, Carol, your house is next on my list.
And, uh, Carol, I'll be sure to, uh, I think we only had two spots. Um, the rest was with, uh, uh, public agency groups. And so, uh, this time or the next time hopefully is for more of like the counselor-commissioner opportunities to get out there. So I will definitely include you guys on that when it comes about.
Yeah, that'll, that'll be great because I haven't seen all that property. I, I did the tour down by the park and looking at the river access, but I, I have not been out into that land either, so that'd be great.
Yeah, Mr. Meyer just, uh, put in the chat that, um, he, if anyone's interested, he's, he'll allow you to come out and look at his property. He said he's pretty available, so.
Oh, that's great. That's great. So, um, Mike, anything else that you'd like to, um, sounds like you probably covered a lot there, so.
Yeah, I'd just say, you know, the tour was really enlightening and, uh, just having the landowners there and talking with them about some of the history there. It, you know, it opens your eyes on, you know, what's there, little, the long history. You know, we were, we were pretty up to speed on a good portion of it, but there's still little things that you can learn from the landowners. And, uh, I think it's really valuable kind of hearing some of that stuff, so. Big, big thanks to the landowners here. If I did it on and to take a look.
Right, that's, that's great. Um, commissioners, do any of you have any reports that you'd like to share with the, with the, with the commission? No, nothing going on yet? Okay, all right. Um, so generally speaking, there's nothing else on the agenda unless someone else has something else they'd like to, to talk about. Okay, so are we ready to adjourn? All right, so I hear a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Okay, Mark makes the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
That would be John's second. Okay, all right. All those in favor of adjourning, just raise your hand. Looks like that's unanimous, so, uh, this meeting is now adjourned at ten thirty-seven. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, bye-bye.